This conference will now be recorded.
8:30? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Morning, everybody. It's Tuesday, April 16th. Weekly meeting for the supervisors. It's available by GoToMeeting also. We have an agenda in front of us. Everybody have a chance to look at it. Any additions, corrections, if not? Just a motion?
I'll make a motion if we agree, Dennis.
Your motion is our second.
Our second.
All payers say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve the minutes for April 9th and April 10th meetings. Corrections? Everybody's happy? Is the motion approved?
So moved.
Your motion is our second.
Our second.
Any discussion?
We're calling Tom.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye. County attorney, gentlemen, discussion.
I'll be pretty quick. Only thing I'm gonna mention is, I think I might have mentioned this last week too, but I didn't have the time last week. That wind ordinance, I got it. Looked at it a little bit, not a lot. I guess I wanna try and look into that here in a week or so, this week. Then, you know, good thing, I hope things kinda slow up a little bit now. Been a pretty busy couple of months. I do have a couple jury trials coming up, and then a bench trial coming up, all pretty quickly, so my time's gonna be... I'm trying... It's gonna be a little hit and miss, but... I'm gonna try and look at that here, yet this week if I can. Guess that's probably the only thing that's coming to the top of my head right now. Anybody have anything?
I'm good. Alright. Thank you. Department head discussion. About the sheriff.
Sheriff.
Sheriff. Jim? Sheriff.
Yeah, good morning. I have two items for you. The first one, um... So I have March fees, $3,023.23 for you this morning. And the other item is on Thursday at 10:30, I'm gonna meet with the sheriff from Worth County at our office and start the process of putting an agreement together to hold your inmates. So, I'll have more for you on that next week. That's all I have, unless you have something for me, or folks here do.
Motion to approve the dollar roll?
Yep.
Yep. Motion to approve the sheriff report? So moved. Your second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
We're calling Jim.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
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 Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll go to the department head discussion.
Along with conservation, we had our monthly board meeting last week. Let's see, we had water trail project on the agenda. Items on that item, we're basically updated where we're at, still looking like a December letting on that project. We had to sign an agreement with the DOT on how the funds that we got through the federal government would be spent, and the policy procedures will follow on the DOT. It's pretty typical stuff that Rich deals with as well, too. We did camera quotes, cameras at the recycling center, the nature center, the dam, and one of our campgrounds, just to kinda see what the pricing were on those. The board would like to see, uh, shrink down on the amount of cameras we have, to kinda see different options, different views. So we got several quotes, and then we're gonna follow those back and come back till next month with the thing. We also talked about equipment issues that we're having out at the conservation with our mini excavator kinda being on its last leg, and options that we can move forward with that, so the vast may move forward from there. The Iron Horse Marathon is coming up, May 4th, that is put on by our WOPC trails committee. So that'd be May 4th, and I know as of last conversation I had with Elaine, they had a larger number of people signed up for it type thing than they had last year at the time, when they had, she gave me an update, they had more people signed up at that time than they had last year at that time, so they're hoping for another good day on that, so we're hoping for nice weather on May 4th. We updated on the deer turkey show, um, where we ended up on that, which was a great success. This was probably the most people we had out at the nature center that day. A lot of people came funneling through. We didn't end up raising enough money, and then the pheasants forever, but also Ducks Unlimited stepped up, helped us. So we were fundraising for a cedar, to do food plot seeds throughout the county, to do food plots, and they kept up the, matched the difference that we needed to go ahead and buy that piece of equipment, so we got that taken care of. And as for campgrounds, they are in the process. Cedar Bridge is open, Pioneer Park is open. By the end of this week, we should have Otrano done, and Riverside Park should be open by the end of this week. And then next week, we'll have Halverson and Interstate Park will be done next week. So that's our goal by the end of this week, is to have four of the six campgrounds open, and by the end of next week, have all six open. So most of the time, we try and have them by May 1st, but the weather's nice, we're gonna try and get them open sooner. That's what I got. Follow up?
Questions?
I want the plan to lower the river still in the back?
Yep, we should be hearing back here within the next week or so from the Washington to see that the permit licensing that has gone through. From my last conversation we had, they hadn't been any, they have to do, it's a process, it's a whole process when you're dealing with Washington, but they have to go through their steps and procedures. Everything was publicly posted sometime in March, the first part of March, and that's a 30-day wait. If they get no correspondence from, you know, like the US Fishing Game, ship bow, historical society, that sort of stuff, then they go ahead and release the thing, and we're kinda looking sometime that that middle of September is when everything will go through. But we hope to have a date in place by the 1st of June, is our hope, to be able to say this is when the project will start. An actual date, so that way the residents up and downstream are aware of the fact that it's gonna start. The only thing that would deter that is if we're flooded at that time. But here, we can't control, and it doesn't look like we're gonna flood anytime soon, so it looks like we're gonna be struggling to get it. So we'll take it today, but we can know.
Alright, anything else?
Thanks, Chris.
We need like the department head discussion. You'd mentioned one time about the courthouse payment, and you want that as an agenda item, or you want us just, uh... I mean, we talked about it one other time, I thought, but...
Yep, so last year, you guys approved the budget half was coming out of local option, half was coming out of the tip payment. And this will make those in Ju... in, sorry, for July, for June 1st. So we do have on the agenda for a budget amendment, and the budget amendment, I have it still the same as how you guys had it approved it last year.
So will we discuss it at the budget amendment, or you wanted something before that?
Yeah, if you got it, yeah.
It came up one other time, I almost, and I wanted it to be paid by the TIF account, the whole thing, and not local option sales tax. And I thought we'd mentioned that here, but I don't know if you need a vote on that, or just what?
So you guys, yeah, and you can do that in the motion to set the public hearing. Right now, we have a lot of money in our local option, and it's not supposed to be a reserve account, so we do need to spend some of that money. But that's up to you guys, how you want it.
What is that payment again?
It's 500 some thousand, so it's like 240-ish, I wanna say, of each.
500 for total?
Total, the total payment for it, yeah.
So, just so I'm clear on this, just the motion to set the public hearing, you want that also to include how we're going to do the payment?
If you want it switched, I need to know, yes.
We can include that in on that motion?
Yeah.
Okay. So when, so what we, when we approve to set the public hearing, we'll be approving how we wanna do the payment also?
Yep.
Okay. Any other department head discussion?
Reminder, open enrollment is tomorrow morning, at 7:30 and 10:00.
Alright. County engineer, how's things?
Not much. Gonna rain, so.
Good.
Once we get the rain done, we'll be outlaying, you know, we've been outlaying the last couple weeks, or last week or so, but spotting to, but... But other right now, I'm gonna, now that budget and program is over, I'm gonna go back and try to get a couple projects closed out. The DOT, so we're still trying to scrape some stuff together, yeah, just little knickknacky things here and there, but gotta get those done, so... That's all I've got. I'm just gonna wait out the weather and see what happens, hopefully we don't get anything too severe up here.
Okay, alright. Thank you. Discussion of possible action on unused vacation time pay. It was on last week's agenda, we took it off, so we could get it for another opinion, and that opinion was the same as Mr. Murphy had. Any other discussion, or...
I guess, I guess I wasn't aware that it was, they, uh... I was just kidding about it.
Tough question, why did we not have a vote on doing a second opinion? I didn't even know that we were doing a second opinion until it came off the agenda last weekend. We didn't have a meeting to discuss it.
No, we didn't. I was talking to the Carl about two pipeline questions, and I said, I think, by the way, this had come up last Monday, it'd be on the agenda for Tuesday, and he asked if we could get it removed from last week's meeting. So I did, or we talked to Murphy, and we got it off last week's agenda to get more information, and the information is the same as...
So why did we not leave it on the agenda last week to get a motion to seek out a second opinion?
Yes, I don't know. Why, we need a vote to take something off the agenda?
I don't, I mean, I wasn't in here personally, I was over my mind, I didn't hear all of it. So I'm just curious if we had a second opinion, and everyone should have a vote on that second opinion, right?
If that's the way you wanna do it, you could do it that way.
I, I was just, I was, it's too late now, but I was just curious. I wasn't informed that we were getting a second opinion, and what was going on, so I'm very, I was just confused.
Is that a recommendation of the insurance carrier? We're supposed to run stuff like this past the insurance company, in case they have to pay up?
Well, we could've still talked about it, I guess, in my opinion, but I was just, yeah, lost.
Did the second opinion cost us money? No.
Well, that's good.
They're on retainer with insurance company for questions if you have to ask questions to them.
Aaron, you've looked at the documents then? That was the insurance review?
I, 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 I know what I've looked at.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know if there's other things out there, I've not seen.
Okay.
But, I mean, I know what I've looked at.
The total amount we have to pay is 5,900?
5,907.52, yes.
So we have to pay his lawyer fee?
Correct.
As well, and the insurance people agree with that?
Carl Samuels, he said, yep, he paid the insurance, or he's gonna be paying the lawyer fee. It's 82 hours of vacation that never got paid, plus the code section 918.7 is double the amount. Alright, well, code stuff, we love.
So back, back when this all happened, I thought we said, I thought we all agreed, had a consensus. I don't think we had a vote in that consensus about if he gave up the passwords, we would pay this, so why did we not pay it?
We didn't pay this because our office questioned it, and we were told not to pay, so we never heard back.
Well, that's, that's fine, I mean, so you didn't hear back.
We're a little irritated by it, because we could've paid the 82 hours, and that's all the time we would've had to pay.
Right, I was just, I was just lost, like, why did we lose this, and why did it take so long?
I don't remember, it was all five saying, we're not gonna pay it either, and no.
No, I didn't hear that, I don't remember that either. I went back in my old minutes, I didn't see anything, but I remember, I thought we just had a consensus, 'cause he went to go talk to him, give the passwords, consensus, we would pay him if he gave passwords, right?
I went to talk to him, and he said that he would give the passwords back if we didn't contest his unemployment. And we asked Aaron about that, and he said, we all got that email from Aaron, and he said, that he was good. Next thing I know, we get this bill here for not paying his vacation, which I didn't know, I guess.
And who were we waiting to hear back from about it?
I was the one who told him not to pay it until, until we got the passwords back, but that was...
And we never knew the passwords got turned in.
That was like the first week or two, we were all into this.
But that was when Solutions had him on the phone.
Yep, and back in the mess we had.
Yeah, we all, yeah, knew about that, okay.
The way I look at it is, it's rising quite rapidly. Maybe it's a lesson learned that, you know, we're not all attorneys sitting here, but I don't like this going up double, and if we don't take care of it.
Yeah.
It's gonna continue to go rapidly, the way it looks to me, so... I think we need to pay it.
I guess we'll have to. Alright, that's all I have, thanks.
Do we know where it's coming out of?
Out of the consultant service line in the 99s. I did ask Carl about the vacation time coming out of like payroll like it normally would, but because he is no longer an employee, it can't be done that way, and we'll have to do a handbrake after this meeting. We won't wait until next week's public session.
So, we have motion to pay the 5,907.52. Motion to approve county warrant for the amount of 5,907.52, payable to Paul Bujan and his attorney, Andy Legrand. Is there a second?
Our second, yeah.
Any other discussion?
We're calling Tom.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Mike.
Mike? Motion passes. Approve recorder's monthly report for March? Did we get that?
I don't have that.
We didn't get one either, I was thinking that she might have brought them down, but...
We have 6,048.40.
6,000 what, Tom? Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve.
Recorder's?
Recorder's monthly report.
Your motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
We're calling Mark.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Tom.
Motion passes. Approve public notice for Master Matrix on River View livestock site. If you want a public hearing, we can have it on May 7th at 9:15 a.m. Or... Is it required, public hearing or discussion?
No, it is required to receive public permits. I don't think it hurts anything to do a public hearing. I'll make a motion to approve the public notice for Master Matrix for River View livestock site on May 7th at 9:15 a.m.
Your motion is our second. Second. Any other discussion?
We're calling Sidney.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
So the discussion is in regards to the public notice, but we talked about who's gonna be doing that. I looked up, and it's Mike's responsibility to do that, so you aware of that, Mike?
Yep, that's fine, aye.
Yeah, I was wondering how that all worked.
So where do I get it all, Mark?
Call the DNR. Call the DNR.
Call the DNR, and I'll give it to me, I'm sure there's more than that.
Yeah, exactly.
I have a packet.
You got a packet? Oh. Okay, can you give it to me then?
I don't do it.
You wanna do it? Since you've got the packet.
It's your territory.
I don't, no, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, I, I, I went through it Thursday, but I think it'd be good for you to...
We'll get over it?
Look it over, I mean, it's...
I don't have a problem doing it.
I've, so, I'll, uh... I've got, I've got a scoring, so I'll let you kinda go through it, and the DNR has a scoring, so.
Yeah, you gotta do site visit, check all that out, yeah.
Yep.
No, that's fine.
Alright, so Mike is taking that over.
Yep.
Good.
Alright, set public hearing for budget amendment? And if we do, then it'll be May 7th at 9:00 a.m. So I wanna discuss the local option sales tax part of the, the formula that the state imposed on us is not just this one year, but it's going to be very possible, it's gonna happen again, and it's not based on the the levy rates that we used before, it'll be based on the levy rate that it was reduced to this year, so it could possibly go down even more if we have growth. I know the local option's not supposed to be a savings account, but it's also something that we can use with our budget for the upcoming year, if we needed to make things work. So I, I kinda wanna keep it intact for that purpose. Doesn't mean we can't use portions of it when something comes up, but I'm a little nervous about using large expenditures out of it.
I know in previous years, we've used it for that purpose, for rubbery production, or to fill in holes, so, yep. I'm in favor of that also.
Alright. Got my motion?
No, we're just setting the public hearing.
Just setting the public hearing?
Including the motion as far as how we're gonna do the courthouse payment, so I will make a motion. Motion to set the public hearing date for the budget amendment for May 7th at 9:00 a.m. And included in that motion is, we would, we'll start paying for the courthouse payment with TIF dollars, fully with TIF dollars. Does that make sense for your motion? We have motion, is our second.
Second.
Any other discussion?
We're calling Tom.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Alright, May 7th at 9 o'clock. Old health, public health update?
That's a busy day.
Well, that's a busy day. Good morning. Mike. I do have some handouts for each of you.
Thank you.
Yep. So I'm handing, yeah. More, do you want it? Do you want another one?
I got, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. So what I'm handing out is just our expense and revenue worksheet snapshot, and then our fiscal year '23 annual report for our corporates and financials. So just to start off with our expenses and revenues, the board had a meeting last Friday. So just a snapshot of, at the end of March, what our expenses and revenues look like. We're at about 70% of our expenses, we've got about three more months left. So I think we're sitting pretty good on expenses. Our revenues are outstanding right now, about 91% at the end of March with three more months to go, so we brought in quite a bit of revenue than what we originally budgeted for, so that's a good thing. Despite how they're looking, Rachel had reached out about an amendment that she's doing. I would like to do an amendment, just to kinda make some line items look more accurate with mainly because of that IT grant, again, that we had to purchase things, and we've already been reimbursed. Adding about 30,000 on expenses, but then we're also adding 30,000 on revenues, so in the end, it's gonna be the same, but just wanna make those a little bit more accurate on both ends. So that will be included in the budget amendment that you guys just approved for the public hearing. So, we are currently sitting at, we budgeted for using about $384,000 for county money, and we're currently sitting, at the end of March, only using about $86,000. So, like I said, a lot of that has to do with how much revenue we're bringing in compared to what we thought, so... Any questions on that? So the annual report, I'm not gonna go through every page, but it's a lot of, a lot of interesting, good information, our stats for the last five years, going back to FY19. So just some things to point out, we've done about, in fiscal year '23, we've done about 11,000 home health visits. That includes nurses, aides, speech, physical, and occupational therapy. So that's a lot of visits being done in a year. If you go to page 6, just kinda going over some of the public health things that have increased, you can see by looking at our immunizations, they've really increased since the previous years, you can see a huge uptick in those, which is FY24, this year, we've given even more than that. So it'll be interesting to see what next year's is. Also, our blood pressure screenings, we've over-doubled how many screenings we're doing throughout the county, as well as CPR classes that are getting taught to healthcare workers, and just individuals that are interested. So you can just see the increase in public health activities and resources we're offering out in the county. Justice's done a really good job getting out there and doing more things compared to the last five years, so... Just some things I wanted to point out, but a lot of good information in there. So I, this is available to anybody in the public that wants to, wants to see some of our stats. I can just step in our office, and I can give them a copy. Any questions on that? Okay. Just wanted to give you an update on our electronic visit verification. I know I've kinda given you updates the last couple times. We're working with a lot of, with all the other counties in Iowa that have the same electronic health records that we have, trying to work out the kinks. On the clinician's side, everybody checking into the homes, though, that's all going well. It's just kinda more on the billing side of it, on the backside, that is, we're having to spend a lot more time. There's a little delay in the Medicaid revenues that are coming in, so just wanted to give you guys a heads up on that. It's just a lot of kinks. It's a new thing with the state that we're having to deal with, that's taking up a lot of time. We signed a new contract with Northern Iowa Therapy. We contract, agency contracts with them to do our physical therapy, occupational therapy, and speech therapy that go out to all of our patients in the home. They have increased their rate for $30 more a visit. So that will probably impact us, we may have to increase our therapy visit rate down the line, but they haven't done it for several years, so it was, it was gonna be coming anyway, but just wanted to give you an update on that. Staffing update, we still are hiring for a full-time or part-time nurse, a home health nurse, and a PRN, a home health aide to help when people are on vacation and off like that, so... Some grant updates. Our FY25 state grant is a three-year grant now, so all we're doing is updating our work plan. We're gonna do the exact same thing we've done this last year. The funding's about the same, about $500 less, seems to go down a little bit every year. We are putting 100% towards our population health, so all of our public health. We used to do some towards our home health to help offset the private pay rates for our low-income patients, but now all of it is going towards public health services. So some of that stuff goes towards our disease follow-up, vaccine, giving vaccinations, providing public health education and resources out to the community in collaboration with county partners for public health. uh in collaboration with uh county partners for public health uh efforts. I also applied for the Elder Bridge funding, uh the Elder Bridge funding helps pay for personal care and homemaker services that we provide for our low-income patients that are sixty and older. Uh so it helps give them some visits, uh supplement some of their um, so their bills aren't so, so big and we can still provide those services that they can't afford. Uh and those are the people that who do not qualify for Medicaid, so kind of those people that fall through the cracks that we can help out. Um the Board of Health approved, uh just a few policy updates, nothing major, just the isolation and quarantine plan, our communicable disease policy and our cell phone policy, and so those were just updated. Like I said, nothing major. Uh just a heads up, you may have seen in the paper or on our social media, it was National Public Health Week, April first through the seventh. Um and then National Nurses Week, just a heads up, that's coming up the first week in May, May sixth through the twelfth. So make sure you thank the nurse out there. Um just some home health stats, we currently, our census is at seventy-two. Um for census stats from our quarter one, January through March, uh we had forty-four admissions, twenty-four of those were uh the pay source was Medicare. We had forty-three discharges, twenty-nine of those, the goals were met, to discharge to home. Uh we did two thousand three hundred and seventy-eight nurse and aide visits during those three months. And our top referral resources or resource was the hospital here in town, Mitchell County Regional Health Center, self-referral and a personal contact, so like their, a family member. Our next board meeting is uh in June, so any questions on any of that stuff?
Catch me here on that PRN, our time.
Yep.
Uh are they just, if they're covering vacations or sick or something, are they just on call all the time? Or do they get a day or two notice or?
So we do, all of our aides on staff, from PRN to full-time, everybody is on a weekend and holiday rotation. So they do participate in that, which would be every fifth, if we had another person, it would be every fifth. Right now they're doing every fourth, we have four aides on service, or on um employee. And then um, yeah, it's kind of on call, like we do our weekly schedules a week in advance for the aides. So uh if we know somebody is going to be on vacation in like a month, we'll reach out to the PRN aide and um see if they're available. A lot of times it's in the summertime, uh we were having a PRN um college students that were going to school for nursing and it worked out great because they were off for the summer, um but right now we, we lost those two to becoming nurses, so, so that's kind of what we're looking for, and then when they're off for the holidays. But they definitely, they're on the rotation for the weekend, the holiday, for sure, and we do that a year in advance for weekends and holidays.
Thank you. Some hours.
Yep, oh yeah, yep.
Okay, thank you.
So here's some public health updates um since our last board meeting in February. Um I did forty-four blood pressures that were assessed, one clinical referral given. Immunizations, we had ninety-two patients come in for immunizations with a hundred fifty-one vaccines giving, given. I am working on sending out men and night community, um we'll travel there at the beginning of May or mid-May. And a few numbers that I put together, so we started VaxCare, our new system, a year ago in April. Um so prior to um fiscal year twenty, so fiscal year twenty-three, um we so April twenty-twenty-two to March twenty-twenty-three, before we started VaxCare, our revenue um with vaccines was fifty-eight thousand dollars. Um and at that time we had twenty-four thousand dollars of expenses, so right around thirty-four hundred dollars of income. Um thirty-four thousand, excuse me, of income. Um so since starting VaxCare, with VaxCare, we have no expenses, so we don't buy the vaccines outright. We, they send us vaccines and we basically give them. So since um starting VaxCare, so April twenty-twenty-three until just February, I've been quite a year. Um we made right around something one thousand dollars. Um it's, and there's no expenses at all included in that, so that's about a thirty-seven hundred dollar difference. So huge um increase for us and just seeing a lot more individuals come in. Um Christine and I are working on postcards right now just to send out to um everyone two months to nine nineties of age, so um just those that need vaccines that we run it off our program. Um and so they will um get postcards in the mail for that too. So it's been a huge um success VaxCare has and it definitely keeps us busy um with the vaccine side of things as well too.
And just a, another note on that, so before VaxCare, our biller was spending hours on billing um the insurance company, mainly Medicare. Uh so that's several hours that we no longer have to bill and we're only paying VaxCare twenty dollars a month to be able to do all that billing, so it is, it's been a huge, huge, huge success.
Um I did submit the grant, um immunization grant uh just yesterday for the um immunization fiscal year twenty-five. Um so that's submitted, it's, is the same as last year, eight thousand eighty dollars. Um so I would expect that we'll be getting that for the health for fiscal year twenty-five. Um put clinics, um we started put clinics at the back, or at the end of November, something that we did way in the past before my time. Got it going again, um lots of outreach, lots of um telling individuals that we, we're running this and we've seen an increase come in of individuals. It's just basically those individuals that can't cut their toes, would have to go in and see um what doctors address here in town or anywhere else just to get their toenails clipped, so um we offer that service. Um and in the last couple of months, we've, or last month, we've seen um six individuals come in and we're just trying to push that out more too, um so they can take advantage of that. CPR classes, um I have given twenty individuals CPR classes. Um I am working on, with the Little Cedar Men and Night Community, uh they are wanting CPR classes for a, a group of about fifteen individuals, so um that's something new and exciting that they have that interest of, of getting that done for them, so I am working with um select few on that to get that started and taken care of. Stop the bleeding Narcan, um since you guys have been, heard about that, I have given out thirty-nine free stop-the-bleeding kits from the state. Um I provide education demonstrations and free kits to schools, courthouse and city halls throughout Mitchell County. Um so I have one suit in my office, um and it's for Harper here, and so we'll get out there, we're just waiting on um his approval from the city health board, um and we'll get out there and give that education and give them their stop-the-bleeding kit too, so. Um baby service course, I gave that update last time, I have completed that class. Um waiting for some grants to come around so I can apply for some, just for some materials that are needed for that, that class that I can provide. But hopefully this summer, um I will provide those classes for anyone fourth through sixth grade. Um for more experience out there as well too. Reportable cases, we have three reportable cases in Mitchell County, um one campy, one E. coli and one early chiosis, which is a tick-borne illness. Um measles, I'm sure you guys have probably all heard measles on the news, if you watch the news. Uh we do not have any cases here in, in Mitchell County um or in Iowa, but um we are preparing for a hospital outbreak in that. So working with the state, um as of April fourth, we had a total of one hundred thirteen measles cases that have been reported in eighteen states. Um so that's more than total was reported in um the year twenty-twenty-three. Seven outbreaks have been identified, um and typically where we see measles um come from is just when people are traveling, so leaving the country, coming back into um their home state, so if that happens, um the state will give me a call and say, hey, we had someone travel um and they were exposed to measles, you need to follow up with them, um checking the immunization records. Um see if they've ever been vaccinated for measles and then, you know, a lot of times it's just those younger kids, they can't get vaccinated by age of one. And so that having to do a twenty-one day quarantine, um and just keeping an eye on those families, um so they don't, don't spread it. Uh we got serology kits and um other test kits from the state, um because we would be the ones that would be providing those tests if they were to come back. Or let's say they call in to the doctor and say, hey, I was exposed, they don't want to go out and give them, they'd call us and we would go out and get those tested and send those into the state. Um so that would be our primary responsibility if we do have anything, so we are preparing ahead of time. Um just make sure we have stuff available if something were to happen here in Mitchell County, so. Um just getting, getting that all narrowed away and set up, so. Um respiratory update, last couple of weeks, um we've been at matter of spread of influenza and low spread for COVID. We do currently have one nursing home here in Mitchell County with a COVID outbreak. Um so I, I'm working with those individuals and just giving them education guidance and making sure they have enough PPE and um answering all their questions um for their outbreak. We, I did present um at Learning Connections in both OCSAGE and St. Ansgar, presented to the kids on hand hygiene um and then just presented basic hyman maneuver um and had other discussions with the adults at these, so. Um really good at both places, um the audience was very, they, lots of good questions and everything too, so that was great. Um also part of the active shooter and mass casualty event at the OCSAGE schools um that participated in. Um and so that was really good to see, there is one going on in St. Ansgar in June, so we'll be participating in that one as well too. I gave you guys the update on mental health prescribers, so you guys are aware, aware of that. Um one thing, just our mental health county coordinated response team is gearing up for um a denim day walk against sexual violence. Um this is Wednesday, April twenty-fourth um at noon. And we'll be walking from city hall uptown to, I believe uh maybe the end of the, this end of the slot, whatever street this is, and then back to city hall and then if people are able to, walking down to the hospital around the hospital. Uh we do ask that you wear denim and what this is, it helps aware, raise awareness of sexual violence with the goal of to end it. Um a lot of people ask why denim, and this is the response, the nineteen ninety-nine ruling in Italy that overturned a rape charge because the female was wearing tight jeans prior to the assault, which was seen as a form of consent. So I'd love to have you guys come up and anyone else, um just wear some type of denim, whether it's jacket, jeans, whatever, um and join us for that. Um walk, there's lots of hospital staff and other partners um that will be joining us um for that as well that day too.
What time did you say?
At noon, yep, rain or shine, so bring your milk if it's raining out.
What day was that?
Uh April twenty-fourth, Wednesday. Um also next week is um Drug Take Back Day, um it's April twenty-seventh. And we're not going to necessarily participate in Drug Take, Take Back Day, um just because we have several reciprocals that are open all times for drug take back. So I am putting something in the article with opioid funds, um and just pushing more um information out of our two sheriff's office and then the pharmacy in St. Ansgar, the individuals, any unused drugs, please take them back, get them out of your homes. So I will be pushing more information out on that as well too. I did attend the public health conference at the end of March in Des Moines, um lots of good network working, lots of good presentations as well as also. Any questions for me?
Appreciate your information.
Thank you.
Uh items of note, meetings attended.
We had a region two RPA policy board meeting. A public hearing in regards to the transportation improvement plan amendment. The federal government's going to provide some, it's called GAAP funding, because of the lack of existing funding for the transit system. So you're going to help out with that a little bit. Went through the state transportation block grant and transportation alternatives program, the financials for both of those. The FY twenty-four, twenty-nine, uh it's a five-year plan, uh passenger transportation plan and it has a lot of demographics and a lot of information for uh the eight county NiCon region, just people live here, how much people use transit, how much people use this, how much, all kinds of great information in it. It's required that it gets put together and um so we, we review that, it's just a draft, but yeah, we still have to approve it. Then had a Mitchell Soil and Water Conservation District meeting. There's a fifty-two, there's forty-two wetland letters that have been sent out to landlords for possible wetlands uh construction or implementation. Um there was stream bed stabilization project that's close to completion, uh it's off by Fort Hill Avenue. Uh so the soil health event that was in Floyd County was a great success and uh they plan on moving it to alternating counties each year. And it would be, uh I believe it was Chickasaw, it's probably next year, I didn't write that down, I think that's what it's planned for. Um water sampling for Mitchell County, they plan on starting very soon for twenty-one sites that they do for Mitchell County. And then they did ask in regards to the school bill documents to be signed, if they'd been completed and they need to get them turned back in to their office, so.
Amy, the possessive office, that binder?
Okay. She, she should have them already, so that binder goes to NRCS.
Okay, I'll go there.
Clarify that, but I, it seemed like that's what I did last year, I thought Amy had her own and then the binder goes to NRCS.
We'll check that out.
Okay. That's all I had.
I had a landfill meeting, we finalized the issues with the haul trucks, so we will thankfully get that back. Um still going to discuss it. We talked about taking bids, they want to do a concrete pad for around the backside where they park their vehicles, we've taken bids for that, I think that closed, then we, um they had a lot of bids, good bids. Went with uh Wix, they had Wix. Yeah, did that. Went over budgets. Then I had a NiCon meeting as well, I zoomed in on that and they talked about hazmat chief needed um a few more on his team, sounds like they filled a couple of spots, we're still hoping for a spot, went over budgets and financials.
I have a conservation board meeting, it might go over that, uh I have the public health meeting too, which they went over. Except for the environmental health, I don't know, with Amanda, was there? Are you? Amanda? Maybe that wasn't Amanda.
It was.
It was?
She's coming, I heard the door.
Oh, she's coming, okay.
I heard the door.
Oh, I see. Briefly tell her information that she'll do better job.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I heard her door. Yeah.
Lights out.
Lights out? Maybe she's not.
She's occupied.
Oh, she's occupied. Well, anyway, I know she said her revenue was up from last year, last month, whatever, says you're going to have to do an amendment on that too and and she said there's two wells closed, forty-eight water tests done, six accepting permits, three new wells drilled and and there's nine installers in the company that came to her meeting, her installers meeting for something, so. That's unbrief.
I had nothing last week.
I had nothing.
Uh public comments, any public, Mr. Gibson?
March Avenue on the west edge of Stateville, it's way too narrow. If you get on there with a tractor with duals on this one-lane road, there's no shoulders on it. The ditch drops off probably seven feet and yesterday, uh Northern Country Co-op built that whole new facility on the northwest edge of town there and all that traffic, all the grain haul then, got to go across that scale and now they merged with Via Field, so it's nexus. I was out there yesterday, I had farm drawn on both sides of that and it's, there was a lot of traffic on there and there's going to be more. And there should be a, at least put a speed limit sign out there, because that one semi had jake brick, uh he kind of liked the sound of that. They were moving.
Wasn't the city Stateville thing?
I talked to the city Stateville about it, that, because that's a shared road, it's half and half, half county, half city.
Yes, I believe it is.
Yeah, and they talked like, they realize it's narrow and the ditches are deep, so they would like to cut it down. Takes them off, put it on the sides, make the ditches not as deep, be able to widen it.
Widen it all up.
Yeah, and I don't know, I can see, talk to Richard, I can talk to both of them, see, see where they're at with it, because they both, they're both aware of it. Now it's a city's proposal to, to cut it down, which makes sense, because you don't need them deep ditches.
When you go around that corner, there's five road rock.
Oh, right, exactly, yeah, it's, it's, it's about as bad as the Tonerville Road was till that.
Come near, that semi nears would hit, you know. I think it could be a last, you're waiting.
Yeah.
All that traffic.
He probably needs a speed limit, there is a. Yeah, well, that traffic, he probably needs a speed limit, there is no speed limit sign, though.
I got a call about, probably six years ago, there was some people out there walking, they said I drive too fast on that road.
But what's the speed limit on it? I thought, they told me it was fifty-five, I thought, well, I never go over fifty, because I, there's somebody out there walking, I get, oh, slow down. As if it's half and half, I don't know, you know, the country's fifty-five, the town's twenty-five, well, which, is it which side of the road you drive on then, or what? That, I don't know. Yeah, I can talk to both parties involved and see if something can be done, because it's, yeah, I agree. And it's all breaking up, but it's probably the worst broken-up road I've seen in the county, you know?
Good comment. Any other public comments?
I'm just gonna say, wow.
Wow.
I mean, I mean, I'm hearing really cool things about going on in all the public health, county conservation. The problem is, they're talking to you, and so we in the audience have kind of a hard time understanding all the things they're saying. And my experience with trying to be with you online is not very satisfactory. So that's just, that's my knock on the meeting, but. And I wish we had a better way of making the public aware of all the amazing things. We've lost newspapers. You know, it used to be, you'd read these articles in the newspaper, and you'd know and do so much with them through Facebook. There's no answer to that, but there's, yeah, all the the programming going on, very impressive.
It's very important that department heads come here and tell what they're doing, because just, you you said it, I don't even need to repeat it, it's, people need to know it.
And even the sheriff, when he's standing here, kind of facing the audience, I didn't catch everything he said. Now, that might be, you know, a need to hear again, but I don't want to admit that right now.
I do know, if you don't speak up or articulate to the owl, the video, when you watch it, you you'll miss parts. So you, sometimes I know Rich, he'll talk loud, and then all of a sudden, he'll be struggling through, and you can't hear. So it just depends on how you speak to the owl, if it will catch it, so, yeah. But, yeah, I know what you're you're saying, it's hard to be online and do the video.
I don't know, one of the things I've heard from the public is, you know, the the board meeting is eight-thirty Tuesday morning. Working people cannot attend. They should have a meeting once a month or quarterly or something in the evening, so people can attend, is the comments I've heard, you know? Which, you know, kind of makes sense, you know? But I don't think there's a county that does an evening meeting, do they? And I, I don't know, you know, but that's what I've heard from working people.
And then, you know, having sat at the city council table for thirty-seven years, we moved our meeting, you know, it always used to be at seven o'clock in the evening, and then moved to five-thirty, which made it a little easier, you know, for those of us on staff, and go home and then come back.
Yeah.
But there's a knock on that time, too. Like, oh, we've got ballgames, we've got this, we've got that.
So how do you adjust yourselves for all the sporting events in this wide, three school districts in our county? And they're not on the same timeline, that's hard to do.
I'm not, I'm not disputing that when I say this, so don't take it that way. But when we have these meetings, we also have department heads coming here. We have workers coming here to talk to us, this is our business meeting. And so if we have a nightly meeting, are we going to be, are these people gonna be getting paid overtime, overtime because they're coming in at a nightly meeting? And so, I mean, there's, there's other things involved with that part of meetings.
I will answer that, no, you're not.
Showing him to do your job.
So, I mean, there is something to it being in the morning, because that's when the county government is operational, and we're all here. We, we have minutes, we have the owl, we have the opportunity for people to come and sit here. It's recorded, so people can watch it later on afterwards. We are doing something to try to make it, help it to the people. We're trying to do a number of things.
And the newspapers, they're reporting articles, too, like they, you know, up online, and they write newspapers. It's important to get information on, I think, yeah.
And, you know, it's just that the public, we're not necessarily energetic when it comes to finding out what our local governments are doing. We want somebody to just hand us the information, we don't want to have to go out and seek, or we don't do a very good job of going out and seeking it unless we have a complaint. So I don't have a complaint, I'm just enjoying learning all this stuff.
Thanks for being here.
And I, I mean, the people are coming in and talking, are talking to supervisors. So I want to make sure and hear, and that's what's nice about sitting here. And I'm not opposed to maybe moving back a little bit and having them where they're speaking this way.
You know.
But, you know, I understand what they're, they're back to you, it is hard to hear them, but I want to hear them, so.
And that's most important.
Any other public comments?
Just Mr. Mayor.
Have any of you heard of any updates on our railroad crossing? Because some of the boards are really breaking up now.
I thought Mike said.
I thought you said everything was there.
Yeah.
They're working on the Crossing Arms, is what the railroad guys.
But not, not the road.
Well, not the road, I know you told me everything was there, and they were ready to start. Oh, so, yeah.
The guy I talked to last Tuesday morning before coming here, he said, I'm here for the Crossing Arms. Oh, man. And he goes, good luck getting the railroad to fix the cross. That was his comment, he worked for the railroad.
Well, I better get busy, yeah.
There's more of the ties that the traffic drive on that are loose and, or the bus.
Because Rich says he can't touch that, right?
What is it, when it goes to the county attorney, send them a letter, because it's a big liability issue there?
I'm surprised that they're in the law, you know, you're blowing tire because of the pins kicking up and.
Send them some pictures.
They're bent over in a horseshoe.
They listen to attorneys better, everybody listens to attorneys better, don't they?
Not as much as I used to, but, uh, but no, by all means. I, if you want to give me some information or talk to me something, I would be happy to do what I can do.
I could take some pictures and send them to you, too, to send them to them, I don't know, would that help or not? It probably, it won't hurt, would it?
Then I could, it will, it will not hurt, and I'm happy to do it. I mean, if if something that needs done for the county, then.
Yeah. Okay, I thought they were doing it all, I did.
That's what I thought at first until last, okay, and he said, we're here for the electrical.
Okay, that's it, wow.
And when he made the comment, good luck getting them to change the crossing.
Wow, oh, it's, yeah, I've never, I don't know if I've seen one that bad hanging around, ever, you know?
No one by Grafton, same railroad, it's hard to get bad, but nothing like that one.
Please, I know in Toderville, they put in a new crossing, and it wasn't hardly, hardly much, not that many years later, they put it, they did it again, you know? I mean, they keep that one just in good shape. Different railroad, though, I suppose, yeah.
Any other public comment? Is there a meeting at nine-twenty-eight?
See you, Mike.